We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the pleasure of allegiance, and I invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Strand.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
Lot of stuff going on, almost three pages of things happening. Lot of people have had some interest in the Seventeenth Avenue South Corridor study. It's going to have its first public input meeting from 5:00 to 7:00 on October 24th in the community room at West Acres. Representatives from the city, MetroCog, and KLJ will be on hand to answer questions and discuss concern. The Seventeenth Avenue stretches the entire length of the city and into West Fargo and is an important roadway for all modes of transportation. While its primary residential corridor also supports most of the intense retail and commercial development in the metro, it serves as a major bicycle and pedestrian generators in schools, parks, and West Fargo, Fargo, and Moorhead. The purpose of this meeting is to identify and discuss issues and opportunities that take Seventeenth Avenue to a safe and effective corridor for all modes of transportation. And I think we really want to have the public there for their input. There's a lot of neighborhood people along there that have some ideas as well. Finance. Finance has done it again, nineteenth year in a row in which it has been awarded. The Government Financial Officers Association of United States Government and Canada has awarded the City of Fargo the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the City's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This award is its highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. Jenica Flanagan, Jamie Bolak, Jesbum, and Megan Zerhatta have individual awards for this reporting. They did this even while Ken was out deer hunting, so we're very happy about this. Health. The flu shot clinic will be held on Friday, November 3rd, in Oak Room at Fargo-Cass Public Health. This clinic has opened to public and will serve to make up clinic for City of Fargo employees who did not receive their flu shot. The flu shot clinic will operate from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Community members wishing to receive the flu shot bring insurance or Medicare card. And I got my flu shot, it doesn't hurt too bad, and it helps protect you through the winter. Libraries. The Library is Native American Heritage Month, and the library in partnership with the Native American Commission, Cultural Diversity Resources, and Plains Art Museum will host a week-long festival and educational series starting Saturday, November 4th. Speakers, storytellers, artists, film screenings, and craft demonstrations are all planned. Perhaps Commissioner Strand will tell about his childhood growing up in a little town, right, John?
Very little town.
Very little town. There are several upcoming programs for visitors at the library, including crafter rooms, pumpkin painting parties, ghost stories for grown-ups, beginner yoga for adults, and cybersecurity awareness workshop for adults and teens. Planning. Interesting, in September, the apartment survey shows that there's an 8.66 vacancy rate upsightly from the 8.39 in June. There are 457 apartments completed in the metro last quarter, and to date, 977 units are complete and 696 units are under construction. The vacancy rate downtown is 10.7% due to 124 units added to the last three months. The construction market appears to be adjusting to the vacancy rates. There have been 5,200 multifamily housing units permitted in Fargo in the last five years. The number of apartments in the metro area is about 40,000 units, which of 30,000 is in Fargo. That explains a lot of time, not a lot of homeowners, but apartment people, Jim, is that right? Yeah. Cashway's Food has applied for building permits in Timber Creek area northeast on I-29 and 52nd Avenue South. The development will include a 51,000-square-foot grocery store, a gas station, and a liquor store. Construction is expected to begin this fall. Tony, you can ride your bike over there for groceries, huh? Or liquor, I guess, either one. Police. The police department is working to expand its wellness initiatives to implement programs for the body, mind, and soul wellness. The committee is organized to explore ideas, continue to create a healthy work environment. The other thing is that you won't see Police Chief today. We have somebody else here, Oz, here today, because the rest of the team is overworking on Habitat for Humanity project today, and they're doing a good job. I saw them working today. The other thing you need to know, remember Solid Waste? We let people come out to Solid Waste, free entrance to landfill. There were 911 vehicles, and they brought in 131 tons of material. That's a lot to put in your vehicle, I think. Very good. The other thing that happened to do today, the diversion had a task force to the two governors of the state of Minnesota and the state of North Dakota, and I have to report back that that is going very well. We thought good dialogue was held, people are getting their opinions heard, and suggestions made as well. So we have great hopes that that will continue to move in a positive fashion. Approve the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th, 2017 regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And then consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda, items 1 through 35?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Garrick. Roll call, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. So our regular agenda, we're going to start with all-in-one recycling update. Terry Lundl, is going to come up or explain that to us?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thanks for the opportunity to stop in and visit with you about our all-in-one recycling program. It's kind of a three-month report card here, where we'll kind of let you know what's the good and the bad so far and what we're seeing. As you may recall, this commission gave us authority to implement that program in November of 2016. We went to work then and purchased containers, trucks, started delivering those containers in June of 2017, and on July 3rd then, we actually started collecting the co-mingled recyclables. The numbers that, so all residents basically were given a 95-gallon bin, and they're collected every other week, just like same thing on their garbage day. When, if you recall, the old program was sorted curbside recycling, where each thing had to go into a separate bin. And if you look at the numbers here from 2016, the participation rate for that program was about 65%. With the new program in July, up to July, we had allowed everyone to opt out of the program. So if folks called us and said, "I don't want to be a part of the program," we'd take them out of the billing process, and we didn't deliver them a container. And so when we were getting to roll that program out then, it was about 90% participation rate. And so from July till September, we've had a few more people that have opted out. I think that maybe they just didn't catch on to the opt-out program. When they saw the container come, they said, "Come and get this." Or they also saw their first utility change and rate change, and so they said, "Come and pick this up." So we lost about 6% since the program started. When we start looking at some of the tonnages, when we were doing the sorted material in the light blue there over the last, or last year's three months, we were at about 100 tons per month. And again, that's why we brought this forward, because over the last three years, we really thought we'd kind of stagnated those volumes. They just weren't moving up anymore, the drop site volumes weren't really moving up anymore, so we knew we needed to bring something forward. And as you can see then, July, August, and September, we're seeing those rates at 300 and 400-plus. That first month in July is really big, because again, we delivered the containers beginning of June, and some folks had four weeks to fill them up, and so we saw that number pretty big. So then the question, you know, if we interpolate that out over a full year, where are we at? And as you can see, we were at the, in our old program, at about 1,200 tons per year. And as you can see with the new program, we're just shy of 4,400 tons a year. So the question kind of becomes then, are folks just using the program more and not using the drop sites? Or is overall recycling going up in the City of Fargo? So we wanted to compare the drop site usage. We did the same thing July, August, and September of last year. And as you can see, those tonnages are down by about 100 tons a month. But overall then, if we take a look at it from the annual basis, we're only down, again, we're only down 1,000 tons a month at our drop sites, and we're up 3,000 tons a month at our curbside. So I think those numbers are fantastic. Little bit of the economics. If we start looking at that 4,300 tons that we're diverting from our landfill, we can go ahead and sell that airspace to someone else. The cost of that airspace is $43 a ton right now at the landfill, so we're saving about 100 and, just about $190,000 a year in airspace. We could also convert that over to days saved per year. Our landfill is currently permitted to take in 750 tons of waste per day, so if we divide out those tons by the overall tonnage of the diverted waste by the tons per day, we're saving about six days per year. And if we look at that over the life of our landfill that we're reclaiming, it's, we're saving about a half a year. And then also, the process that we're working right now for our landfill needs is we're reclaiming and reusing that old landfill. And so there's construction costs associated with that. So we can figure out, based on the design criteria of that landfill, how much waste can go in there, and we can come up with what's the construction cost over that timeframe. And we come up with about $7.29 a ton. Again, taking that same amount of diverted waste, we're saving about $32,000 a year. Along with the Phase 1 going out for the single-family residents, we did visit with a number of the City of Fargo divisions, and as you can see, we worked with all the fire stations, they all have the single-stream recycling, the library, our facility, public safety, municipal court, and hopefully City Hall, once we get that up and running. Some of the challenges, as you can see, there's still contamination, and that's one of the things you always worry about with a single-stream recycling program is contamination rates. You can just see some different, that's insulation on the one in the far left, the next one over, that's kind of just showing kind of a hybrid of the old system where you had to put your cardboard under the container, some of it made it under, some of it made it in, we're just not really sure overall there. And with these folks, what our drivers do is, they'll just give us a call, give us the address, and we send off an informational packet. In the upper right, that's just a number of bags, the one thing we're kind of begging to keep out of the program. And the one in the bottom right, that actually came, that picture came from our friends over in Moorhead. That's a picture of a commercial recycling dumpster, and you can see the contamination in there. You see the cord from a vacuum cleaner and the child protective seat, which, they're plastic, but they're not really recyclable. So again, you know, with our Phase 1, it was all the, all the single-family residents. Phase 2 is again, the multifamily dwellings. We currently have the recycling program in place with about 146 of those folks, and we sent out another 250 letters here just the last month, just to give us a call. We'll come out and visit with you, kind of set up a program. Some of the big concerns with the multifamily dwellings is, who do we bill that service to? Because again, we're basically billing at the same rate as the residential, and that's $92 per ton for everything that's diverted. We just have to figure out who it is that we bill that for. Lot of the multifamily dwellings, they've got just enough parking spots for their vehicles and maybe a garbage container, and so there's always a shortage to use for recycling. And then again, the contamination rates. When Moorhead rolled their program out, they offered it right to multifamily dwellings right away. And one of their big concerns right now is contamination rates. Again, like I mentioned, if we've got a single-family resident, and we've got some things in there that our driver can notice that really aren't incompatible with the program, we can send them a letter, give them a call, stop by and visit. But when you go to a multifamily dwelling, it's kind of hard to do that. So we need to solve that issue before we even, you know, take deeper steps, I think, in the multifamily dwellings. And that's also why we really don't want to implement it into our drop sites right now. Our drop sites are still available, but it's for sorted material and yard waste, as opposed to the co-mingled. One, just last quick comment, we had visited a little bit about what to do with the old sorted blue bins. There was about 16,000 residents that were using them, most of them had a couple of those, so there was probably 30,000 bins out there. We let people know that you could set them out, we'd pick them up, or you could drop them off with us. We probably got back less than 100. And as you can see, we worked with Fargo-Moorhead Community Gardens, and they're using those. And we had one gentleman with a woodworking shop stepped up and said, "I'll take whatever else you've got."
Very good.
So that's kind of the update on the program.
Any questions or comments? Bishop Garrick.
So thanks, Terry. I asked him to come and talk to us about this. You know, you updated me at our regular meetings, and it's just, it's just a fantastic success so far. When you look at the numbers, you know, we're both numbers guys, and when you see those graphs go shoot way up, and we're saving all that space of the landfill, that really excites me, when we see a program like this take off, this is a short period of time, and be so successful. And I know that with, you know, more education in the community and more talking with landowners, we'll get those bins into the multifamily as well, and we'll see those numbers go even higher. So while we are paying $3 per person, or, excuse me, per house right now to have this program, we are saving the city tens of thousands of dollars a year, so thank you for that.
Bishop Grinberg.
Jerry, I had a question from an elderly couple that was wondering if the blue bins could, if they come in a smaller size.
We did order a minimal number of smaller-size ones, and we kind of, we kind of tied that into a program. We call it our elderly carryout program. And there's that homestead tax credit that you can apply for, and if you can apply for that, and if you're not able to get your regular garbage container out to the curb, we'll actually call that a carryout, we'll pull up to the house for garbage, go up to the house and retrieve it, empty it and take it back. For those folks, we're offering that smaller size, but we really didn't want to throw it out to the entire community that we've got multiple sizes, because it becomes, it was about $1.2 million for us to buy these containers, and for us to go that heavy into the inventory, we were a little uncomfortable with right away.
Mr. Strand.
Terry, I have a question about, so Clay County, it was in the news that they're considering building a center. Would we be, is there a way that we can participate in that, or are you involved in that?
We have actually visited with Clay County over the last couple of years. You know, the difficult part of starting up a MRF is they're inherently, their economics are based on volumes, and they really don't know all of their volumes yet. And so they're working with some other communities in North Dakota to figure out those volumes. So we understand the capital costs that would be involved for, but we don't know the monthly costs. And so I think we're in a good situation. We have a three-year contract right now with Mincota Recycling to handle all of our material. And so after three years, I think we can evaluate what's going on with that facility. If we think we're in a good position to work with them, that'd be great. If not, then we could probably just extend the contract with Mincota.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Terry, I, and for people out there in the audience, I, there's been a lot of discussion about plastic bags in Fargo and across the country, and we've had a community-wide network of, task force of people that are looking at public education, from Clay County to Cass County to Fargo, to Moorhead and West Fargo. How's that going? And is there, is it satisfactory, or do we need to, at some point, do you think, step up our education? Or do we need to put more teeth? Because, and maybe we tell people why plastic bags are bad in our system.
Yeah, I think, I think there's always a room to enhance the plastic bag program. You know, currently, right now, all, most of the outlets, the grocery stores and the Targets of the world and Walmarts, they'll accept those bags back. And so I think we need to push that from an educational standpoint. I noticed on Friday that Hornbuckers had partnered with one of the local banks, and they were passing out multi-use bags. And so that's kind of what this task force would like to do, is maybe work with some local private entities to educate folks, number one, and number two, get those bags out in more people's hands.
And just tell us why it's a problem. They get, I guess they bundle up, or they tie up the machinery, or?
Yeah, and that's, it's the one main nemesis of a co-mingled program, because all of this material that comes out of the all-in-one recycling program, it gets bailed and hauled down to a MRF, a material recovery facility. And if you dump this on the different machines and mechanisms, it's the bags that fall off and get tied up into the machines, and they literally have to shut the entire operation down and cut them off. So it's costing time, it's costing money, and ultimately, you know, we see that, we save that downtime in our costs, too.
Any other questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just, one more question. As the Fargo, as we move forward with new apartments, for example, coming online, do we have a proactive communication with apartment developers and our commercial developers so that we can have a discussion upfront about having accommodations for recycling, rather than later on having them say, "Well, we just don't have the space," after it's all done and built?
Yeah, I, I think, again, we could use some enhancement in having a voice there. The other side of that is that within the city waste hauling structure, private haulers are allowed to compete with us on commercial and multifamily dwellings. And right now, we as the City of Fargo only haul 15% of that waste. And those other private haulers, they also offer the recycling programs, just like we can offer, whether it's sorted or co-mingled. And that, so the numbers that I gave you that we've contacted, we've contacted everyone that we're currently servicing. We want to kind of give the private hauler the other opportunity then, that way we're kind of, we're not competing with them so much for the, for the cost of the waste.
Very good. Good report. Good job. Glad it's coming along. We're just going to do item 37, so we don't have to come back and confuse you guys. So State Water Commission requests for cost reimbursements on the FM diversion flood project cost. First cost on A is $1,565,288. Ken Costin to explain.
Yeah, these are the, these are, Commission, the two reimbursement requests for the month of September. The first one, the 1.5 million, is for the local cost for the local flood control on Second Street and along that corridor. And the 708,037B is for the Oxbow cost segregated as requested by the Commission. So we'd ask for your approval, so we can process these.
Can I have a motion for 37A, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 37B, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Strand, is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
No.
Mahoney.
Yes. Public hearing, special assessments list Park District, 2006-2, Phase 5 Improvement District Number 7150. Steve Sprague, right up there at the podium, we're ready to go here today, okay? Steve Sprague to explain.
So probably about every other year or so, the Park District will come to us with an improvement that they want to special assess. A lot of times, it's back to the homeowners in our neighborhood. This is kind of an unusual one. It's a $1.2 million assessment, there's two parcels, and each parcel is being assessed about $600,000. And the two parcels are both Fargo Park District parcels. I don't know why they're, why they're going about this way, but it's how they're doing their financing for this time, so.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the special assessment? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? There's nobody out here that's upset about this? Okay. We'll close public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Garrick. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item B, special assessment list for water main replacement force main construction street reconstruction improvement district BR 16B, is continued from our 10-9-17 regular meeting, and you're going to explain why it's on the agenda today.
Well, so this is the, the project where we had a lot of discussion last time. We really didn't get a resolution at the end of the, end of the time after our discussion. And so I think properly, Kemper put it on so that we could, you know, have a discussion here and, and, you know, not really make a decision, but, so we've discussed as staff, you know, we've, we've had a request to have a brown bag regarding specials. We anticipate that that'll be two, maybe even three sessions, to educate the commissioners on special assessments. And then we were instructed to have a meeting with the neighborhood, and so we feel that it's best to have the, the city commissioners fully educated on special assessments first, and then meet with the neighborhood. And then what we would like to do is to include this in our first run of projects that we do in the spring. And so really, at this point, I don't think that it's appropriate to continue it anymore. We don't know a date certain yet at this point, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Actually, I, while I talked with the assessment department, and so they instructed me on the motion to make, so if you don't, I'll do that.
Okay.
They want to continue it to May 21st, 2018. So that's when the next run will be, and that will give us time to have our meetings and our, and our neighborhood meetings and talk about the special assessments, so.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question. Just remind me again what, I mean, I understand we're going to-
This is the Broadway one where we-
Yep, understand that, that we're going to study special assessments.
Yes.
And the resolve by May 18 is, it's quite a while. I'm just-
May 18th is, apparently Dan's gone through and looked ahead and determined that that's a date. We typically do two special assessment runs a year. The second one is always in October, and then the first one is usually sometime in May, so.
So by May, then we're just kind of looping this one back around, catch the next wave?
Correct.
You're just wondering what happens to those owners that are expecting their specials now. Who pays the interest from now until next May?
City will have to pick that up.
So the City of Fargo takes on the costs, they're paying the interest now, and it's just that it's delayed. Could that owner still get the same special assessment assigned to them next spring?
It's potential. After we've gone through the discussion and analyzed, it'll be up to the commission to decide whether or not they want to change the funding policy to essentially put more city funds in to bring the costs down.
So the City will have an opportunity to put more money into it, it might decrease it, but the City, we have to look at how its assessment was.
I think it's, I think it's important that the commission understand the funding policy before decisions are made about whether or not additional funds would be put into this project.
So worst-case scenario, the folks in question that are challenging us on this, they're not going to end up paying more because of interest costs.
They will not pay more. Worst-case scenario would be the same amount that they saw when they got their notices.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. I'm curious about the comment about our funding policy, and Commissioner Grinberg, you know, the questions you're raising, if we delay this till May, that means there's no revenue till May either, from the collections.
We would not be collecting any specials on this project.
Do we have a sense of how much that totals?
I'm not prepared to answer that. It's important to know that this is one project in a, in a refunding bond, or refunding, so we have other projects that will be paying into the, into the bond, and we saw significant prepayments, and so I think that we're, we have enough funds to make our debt payments.
My concern is, 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 we've done a project, but we haven't figured out how to pay for it yet.
So we've figured out how to pay for it, people don't have to pay.
But that's on hold, and that's in limbo, and we're, and it's being contested. And, you know, and that's part of, I think, our need to have a discussion about specials in general, and, because the cart's kind of before the horse. If you do the project first and then, you got to get your stuff together to fund it, even though we kind of anticipate it'll be specials. But that's my, my, my big concern here is, this is backwards. We're, we've done the project.
Well, and anytime we enter into a project, we enter in following our policy, our, our special assessment funding policy. And so that's what's been applied, and, and that's the answer that came up. Now, the people in the neighborhood have some concerns and some questions about that, and we feel as staff that it's important for the commissioners to fully understand how special assessments work and that funding policy.
And my last concern is, is that, you know, we, we will, we will know later if there's a change or not in this approach to specials, but I still don't know, and maybe it's minor, But I still don't know, and maybe it's minor, what the budget impact is.
I would think that it is minor. Go ahead.
No, I just, yeah.
So I got a notice there's a special in my neighborhood because they put a light signal in that area. So I got a notice that I'm going to be assessed in the future for that project. That bid comes in, John, and that bid can come in high, low, indifferent. I get the advantage of that savings, it's fifteen percent low. And then what happens is specials are divided according to the formula that Dan Aberhart puts into that, and then I get the idea of what my specials are. So we're following policy. The only deal is that the city does pay part of everybody's special. We pay a certain percentage of everybody's special, and Commissioner Pepcorn, we went through that a couple of years ago, and then we redid that. Oftentimes had caps, oftentimes had different things. So it'll be good when we go through the review of how that works. But the reality is, if we delay this decision, it's then the city of Fargo has to pay the interest payments until that time comes. To the person who has assessed the value, they're going to have, they could have exactly the same assessment we do now, unless the city elects to take more of the cost. But in fairness to all taxpayers out there, we would have to say, hey, this is a new policy for all taxpayers. So it would have to be a significant change in our part, so. Commissioner Grinberg?
Yeah, we're dealing, the process is the process. We're dealing with the contested group that's concerned, and so we hear their voice, and so we're going back to the drawing board. There's time required to evaluate and say, okay, what is the final resolve with special assessments? But also to address the citizens' concern on the pro-
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this special assessment concern? Anybody wish to speak? We'll close public hearing, we have a motion to delay this until next spring.
Do you have a second?
It was Pepcorn, Grinberg.
Okay. Pepcorn?
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, application filed by Darren Southern Soul Food, doing Darren Southern Soul Food for Class GH Alcoholic Beverage License at Thirty Universities Drive North. Steve Sprague to explain.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So this is for a GH, which is a beer and wine, application, and it's at the location where the Border Cities Towing used to be. And they've been working on that building for quite a while, and pretty sure Daryl is excited to open shortly. So we did the background check for this, and there were some concerns regarding the credit history. And I think we are going to have Daryl come up and explain some of those items. We had him come before the Liquor Control Board, he wasn't readily available or ready to answer the questions that we had at that time. And so, but it did come here, come with a recommendation of approval from Liquor Control.
Good evening. All right, well, there were some questions about the-
Darren, just what, your full name, so everybody knows your full name here.
Oh, my full name is Darrell Randall. There were some questions about the, my credit history and a couple of things I had in collections. Everything that I had in collections, I have either made arrangements or I've paid. I have dates set up starting tomorrow for other payments. Dates coming later this week, next week, Friday, the following week Friday, and so forth, till I get everything paid off right now.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Mr. Chairman, that's great. And so Darrell, also, if you wouldn't mind giving us a little explanation of your menu. We're a lot of Scandinavians, and so you have to tell us the, we haven't tried some of it, so give us a description of some of your food.
Some of the food is, it goes back to slave days, made in the South. Pretty much back then, black people, they used pretty much whatever they had for scraps and savored it together to make some of the best dishes I've ever tasted in my life. But that's what we bring to the table, like slow-cooked chicken, mac and cheese, collard greens, I mean, whatever. Pretty much grits, like stuff that people don't even eat up here is grits. And that's a breakfast, a breakfast side that you can put with anything. And so, I mean, you just have-
I thought you were going to say breakfast of champions.
Yes, it is of a champion, it'll warm you right on up like some soup.
We're a little afraid the Bison Players might gain some weight, so.
I've had several Bison Players, I opened on Saturday, several Bison Players been in there three, four times already.
Are they the slow ones or the fast ones?
It's the fast ones, the DBs and running backs.
When do you open?
I opened on this past Saturday.
Okay, good.
Awesome.
Is there anybody in the public wants to speak to this license? Anybody wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearings. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item D, application of Reese and Riley's LLC doing business as Reese Riley Bistro at Class GH Alcoholic Beverage License at twenty-six fifty-three Forty-Fifth Street South. Steve Sprague to explain.
And this application may look familiar, you've seen it a couple of times this summer, at least the same name. So what ended up happening here is that the first two applications that we received, there were some issues with the applicants, and so they were denied. And the third application that we're looking at today, the applicant was an investor originally and has money on the line. And so he's stepping in to take active ownership and work actively in the business. And so it does come to you with an approval recommendation from the Liquor Control Board.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Close public hearing, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Pepcorn. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item E, Tunheim Edition, twenty-seven seventy-eight Forty-First Avenue North. Approval recommended by Planning Commission. Zoning change from AG Agriculture to Limited Industrial, first reading of rezoning ordinance, and it's a plot of the Tunheim Edition. Senior Planner Donald Cross to explain. Hi, Don.
Good evening, Commissioners, Donald Cross from the Department of Planning Development. As the mayor has stated, this project is the Tunheim Edition. This is located just west of the airport here, this is Forty-First Avenue North, and this is Twenty-Fifth Street North. It's this four-sided, interestingly shaped piece here. This is a major plat because the plat dedicates additional right-of-way for the widening of Twenty-Fifth Street North. It is plating the existing property into one lot. The current zoning is agricultural, and the requested zoning is LI Limited Industrial. The applicant, Mr. Tunheim, operates a construction company, and he plans to make his headquarters and his shop on this property. As this property is adjacent to Hector Airport, the airport authority has prepared, and the applicant has signed, an airport proximity agreement that is included in your packet. This project also includes an amenities plan, which has been reviewed by the city staff and will shortly be signed by the city engineer and has been signed by the applicant. The project was heard at the Planning Commission on September fifth, twenty seventeen, and that commission's recommendation is included in your staff report and stated on the screen. Please note that the recommendation includes execution of the airport proximity agreement. The applicant, Chris Tunheim, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak, Commissioner, regarding this application? Anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Garrick, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Garrick?
I don't know if it's for staff or if it's for the owner here. There are significant amounts of special assessments that will come into this property, isn't that correct? I'm just wondering if the applicant's aware that at some point there's going to be significant special assessments.
For Twenty-Fifth Street, sir?
For that and for flood protection on the other side of Forty-First. If that's still the case, that's what I'm asking. Is there still significant specials that will be applied to this property?
I believe there would be for the development of Twenty-Fifth Street, sir.
As long as the applicant's aware of that, that's all I'm getting at.
Well, let's have Mr. Tunheim discuss.
My name's Chris Tunheim. I guess I was showing some future special assessments of around sixty thousand dollars.
He just wants to be aware of it because you don't want him to come back here and say, whoops, I didn't know that, so.
No, if the sixty thousand is, I'm aware of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item F, sidewalk waiver request for lots one through five, block seven, Rockin' Horse Farms Second Edition, forty-eight twenty-four, forty-eight thirty-eight, forty-eight fifty-two, forty-eight seventy-six, and forty-eight ninety-four. Rockin' Horse Circle South. Approval recommended by the Planning Commission, Donald Cross to explain this as well.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Mr. Mayor, please note that the city traffic engineer Jeremy Gordon and public works director Ben Dowell will have additional comments as part of staff's presentation when I'm done. Item thirty-eight F, as the mayor has stated, is a sidewalk waiver for a portion of the Rockin' Horse Farms Second Edition. You may all be familiar with this circular group of five lots here, north of Fifty-Second Avenue South. This property is owned GC General Commercial, and is being developed as a business park with a farmstead theme. The applicant requests that the requirements for public sidewalk along the perimeter of the lot, one through five, block seven, of Rockin' Horse Second Edition be waived, and that an alternative sidewalk plan proposed by the applicant be accepted by the commission. So again, here's the location generally, and that depicts the zoning, surrounding residential zoning there on the north and west. And here is the current layout of sidewalks. This graphic here shows the different kinds of sidewalks and trails that are currently installed in this area. And as you see here, there is no sidewalk around this perimeter of the circle. The sidewalk was contemplated at the time of the Rockin' Horse Farms Second Edition in twenty fourteen. At the time of the plat, the owner requested a sidewalk waiver, but ultimately withdrew the waiver application, and it was the city's impression that the applicant intended to construct the four-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk inside the circle. This stretch of sidewalk was intended to be constructed as part of the roadway infrastructure project on the Rockin' Horse Development in twenty fifteen. However, at the time of installation, the owner requested the sidewalk not be installed, and indicated he intended to pursue a waiver, which is this application. And that just shows that we're looking at about, almost a half a mile of sidewalk. This is the applicant's plan here, his alternative plan, which the applicant will also describe in detail, but just briefly, there is no sidewalk around the perimeter of the circle. Instead, there are sidewalks to the individual buildings, some of which take access through the, connect through the parking lot here, and also cross the street. But there is none across the circle all the way and no perimeter. And it connects to some structures and some of the parking lots. As stated in the staff report, Commissioners, chapters eighteen and twenty of the Fargo Municipal Code and the city's GO twenty-thirty comprehensive plan address the importance of sidewalks. A feature of these documents is that standard city sidewalks are an essential part of the development of the city as a shared amenity and as an asset for the community, and an important element of the transportation plan. And construction of sidewalks must consider accessibility and convenience, including availability and functionality for vulnerable populations. And this is just a recap of the items that are in your staff report, gentlemen. City staff does not believe the applicant's alternative sidewalk plan meets these criteria. Further, in planning staff's perspective, the proposal is not equitable to all, the paving material has not been established, there's no connection through the development in a public way, as we talked about a moment ago. Not all buildings have access to the sidewalk, and the pedestrian network is dependent upon the circulation within parking lots in some areas. So you don't want people walking through the parking lot to get to the building if at all possible. The project went to the October third Planning Commission with a staff recommendation of denial. There was discussion of this project at the Planning Commission regarding the intent of the office park, the design of the proposed alternate sidewalk plan, and the purpose of sidewalk networks and infrastructure. The Planning Commission did not agree with staff's recommendation and voted instead to recommend approval of the sidewalk waiver to your commission. The vote was four to three, with one commissioner abstaining and two commissioners absent. So there are actually two recommendations here. Gentlemen, please look at your screen there. At the applicant's request, we clarified the wording on these recommendations a little bit, so they were more different to you. The Planning Commission's recommendation from the October meeting was to accept the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and move to approve the sidewalk waiver on the basis that the proposal does meet the intent of the comprehensive plan and the intent of the guidelines set forth within the LDC. The staff motion is to accept the findings and recommendation of staff and move to deny the sidewalk waiver on the basis the proposal does not meet the intent of the comprehensive plan and that section of the LDC. The applicants are here as well, and as we stated in the beginning, Mr. Mayor, additional staff would like to present as well, so.
Don, is there actually a third motion we might have to consider? Because one says it does meet the intent, one says it does not. Wouldn't it be that they would allow the sidewalk to go in, even though it does not meet the intent of the comprehensive code?
Well, I believe you'd take the Plannings Commission, oh, how do you mean, sir? A lot of the public-
Your two are kind of opposite to each other, but it also goes to the intent of comprehensive plan. My assumption is by not allowing this to go ahead, they would have, doesn't meet the criteria for comprehensive plan.
So the Planning Commission believed it did meet all those criteria and therefore should be recommended for approval, sir.
I'm just saying, there's a third motion, I think, out there for us if we so choose.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jeremy, you're up, I guess.
Thanks, Donald. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just have a quick slide for you, I'll keep this short, if I can find it.
Just for the public, this is Jeremy Gordon, he's our engineering staff.
Yeah, it's been a long day. I got up at four o'clock this morning, got to go on TV and talk at five o'clock, about Thirty-Second Avenue being wide open, so. No orange out there anymore, six lanes.
I think a lot of people are happy today.
That's right, including me.
It looks great.
So I've got one prop, I never do props, but I'm going to give you one prop, just to give you a little bit of definition of what we're talking about here.
Oh, we have not seen this before.
So that's four feet, that's six inches shy of what the standard sidewalk width is in the city of Fargo. So I, I'll go through this quick. So one thing that's kind of, we had some time since the Planning Commission to think about this, is the thing in front of you is pretty clear. The request is a sidewalk waiver, not an alternative sidewalk plan, or any details of it. If the sidewalk waiver is approved, there's no requirement by the applicant to install any of the alternative sidewalk plan that is shown and perhaps will be shown tonight. Two of the lots are vacant and undeveloped, and anything shown on them is just a mere concept at this point. So that's that, and then a couple of other things. This is a plowed field, and there are no physical constraints from putting a sidewalk out there. From a transportation system perspective, this request completes, or creates an incomplete street. We talk a lot about complete streets, multi-modal, cars, bikes, walking. Really, the folks in the center of the circle, it'll only be served by motor vehicle and not anybody on foot, bicycle, wheelchair, or stroller. In transportation, trips begin and end, they have origins and destinations, and without a sidewalk on any side of the circle, anyone human-powered, trying to get to one of the five lots, once they get to that street that goes around the circle, they're on their own to get to the lots from there. Like I said, sidewalk's four-and-a-half feet wide, that's six inches short, and if constructed, it'll be twenty-two to twenty-three hundred feet long. That's all I have.
Now, normally when you have your sidewalks, the intent was to have residential inside that circle, is it not? Does it make a difference in our code whether it's commercial or residential inside the circle?
It does not.
Ben Dowell? Oh, I'm sorry, Tony Garrick?
Just really quick, what's the cost of that sidewalk? What would it cost?
It's usually about twenty-five to thirty dollars a running foot, so it's about sixty-five thousand to seventy thousand total.
Ben Dowell's up.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, Mayor, I do not have any detailed props to show you this evening, but, you know-
That's the biggest, well, snow, wow, in here, so.
Yes, yes. Well, you know, when I talked to the developer, Ken, about this, and after the commission meeting, or the Planning Commission meeting, you know, we didn't really have any fight in this game at the beginning. But when you look long-term, that's where my concerns come up, when he shows an alternative sidewalk plan that can lead to people entering the development in the commercial area that might not want to be there. Ken is really open to walkers and stuff like that, but I see bicyclists, you know, skateboarders, stuff like that, entering, and I'm not sure that he is inviting those kind of people into that area to take part in there. So I see it down the road when my phone starts ringing, and all of a sudden Ken and I are facing this problem, and he's saying I have a lot of people coming into my commercial area that I didn't intend to have in there, and I don't have any control as public works because it's on private property at that point. And so it's going to become a private matter between the developer and whoever's entering, and I can see frustration growing in the future. That's the only reason I would like to see the sidewalk go around the outside, because then I can still control where the pedestrians are walking and are using public property. That's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for-
Bruce Pepcorn?
How about if he signed a waiver saying, I am well aware of what I'll be doing, would that make you more comfortable?
Well, the problem is, I face this with a lot of developments in town where, say, an apartment building has a sidewalk going up, and all of a sudden something's going on, it's in disrepair, or somebody falls, or anything like that. And of course, the first call is to the city, what can we do? At that point, I have no comment, there's nothing I can do at that point. And so that's what happens here, if there's people that are entering and using it that aren't using it in the way that the developer so chooses, at that point, he can put gates up and lock it off, and that's his choice, and I see frustration in the future.
Any questions with the team here? Thank you. Anybody from the public wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant's Ken Promisberger with Rockin' Horse Farms, and Mike Love of Houston Engineering are here. Mr. Love?
Thank you. I just got a quick little presentation here. My name's Mike Love with Houston Engineering, I'm representing the developer, Ken Promisberger. We had sent you guys out a packet of information last week, hopefully you all had a chance to look at that. It kind of outlines why we're requesting the waiver. I'd like to just kind of highlight a couple of things from that presentation or packet, if I could. First of all, the development, or the owner has gone through great, gone to great lengths to make this a unique development. You know, there's, there's, excuse me. He went through great lengths to make this a unique development, I mean, from the learning-oriented pocket parks that are scattered throughout the development, there's four shown on the screen right there, to the architectural design standards of the development that are, they were really inspired by historic neighborhoods in Fargo. So at the heart of this development is the Farmstead Office Park. And the, it really serves as the focal point and inspiration for the entire development. And so the aesthetic design of it is very important to not only the owner, but also the overall development, which is why we're here today requesting this. So I'd just like to walk through kind of the, what the city would like, or the staff would like us installed, or to install, and then talk about what the Planning Commission approved. So first of all, this is the standard city sidewalk design, like Jeremy had mentioned, it's a four-and-a-half-foot sidewalk that would run two foot off the property line all the way around the perimeter of the property. And our issue with this is, yes, it provides a path for someone to walk around, but it doesn't really provide very good- doesn't really provide very good access to the office buildings themselves. If you look at this, you'd have to cross Rocking Horse Circle, you'd walk along the sidewalk till you get to a parking lot driveway. Then you'd walk in on the parking...in the driveway through the parking lot to get to the buildings, which is not only inconvenient if you're in a wheelchair or something, but it's also not very safe. Secondly, the development...or the office park is meant to mimic a rural farmstead. So you think about a rural farmstead, you know, it's trees, lots of green space, not very much hard surface. So a sidewalk in cir...you know, circling that would really kind of, in our opinion, take away from that. Lastly, it's 2,300 lineal feet of unnecessary sidewalk. I mean, the public, if you're trying to get from point A to point B, there's a six-and-a-half foot...or there's a six-to-eight-foot sidewalk that runs along the outside of the entire circle that goes everywhere that you want to go. So our plan, our alternative plan...I'm just going to skip these slides here. Our alternative plan is to provide a more direct access to the buildings themselves. And these are going to be office buildings, so there's not really...there's not going to be retail or really public destination points in here. So, I mean, our design would provide more direct access directly to the building and avoid, really avoid having to place, you know, like Jeremy had mentioned, $60,000 to $70,000 worth of sidewalk that, in our opinion, is really not going to get used, because, like I'd mentioned, the public is going to come and utilize the wider sidewalk. And I mean, especially if you're in a wheelchair, would you rather be on a sidewalk that wide? Or would you rather be on a six or an eight-foot sidewalk? I'd just like to touch a little bit on some of the points that the staff had made. The traffic engineer had pointed out that it's an open field and there's no design constraints. Well, there are a little bit. When the city put the streets in, they recognized that, you know, that the intent was to make this look like a rural farmstead. So they actually placed a shallow ditch, but there's a ditch in the boulevard all the way around the inside of the circle, which a lot of that would have to probably get filled in to put the sidewalk in. Also, in this northeast corner, if any of you have ever been out there, there's actually a pretty good grade separation between the top of curb and the ground right here. So a lot of that would really require some regrading up in that northeast corner. Jeremy had also pointed out that, I mean, we're requesting a sidewalk waiver, and I guess that if that's what the terminology is, I guess that's what it is. I mean, our intent is to have an alternative access plan. And yes, he's right, these lots are not built on yet. But what we're asking for is approval of this concept. So if this building shifts one way or the other, the concept would still hold, and we would provide a direct connection to the building instead of having a sidewalk all the way around the inside of the circle. To address Mr. Dow's concern about people coming in and out accidentally, yeah, we can see that. I mean, that's a potential. But, you know, I equate it to, you know, I equate it to like, say, a cul-de-sac, okay? So if you're coming along on a sidewalk, and this is a long cul-de-sac that you don't know where it goes, and you turn and you go in there because you're not familiar with the neighborhood, you go in, you're like, oh, this is a cul-de-sac. So you turn around, you come back out. I mean, that's what's going to happen here. You're going to come across the street, you're going to realize, oops, I'm in a parking lot, and turn around, come back out, keep going on the outside. So that's what I had. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Promersberger, you want to talk? That's okay?
I'll finish this off.
You're up.
We own Rocking Horse Farm. And to wrap this up, I guess what I'd like to focus on, we put a lot of effort into the design of this project, and there's an agreeing aesthetic with this Farmstead Office Park that's pretty important to the office park and to the community. In fact, this design means so much to us that we've engaged Chris Holly Architects, a residential architect. With each lot that gets purchased, you get some complimentary design help. And how do I run the...okay, right here? Okay, apologize. So we are ending up with a variety of housing designs, and not too many one house or look alike. I mean, not any two homes seem to look alike because of this effort we're putting in. We're also, if you look at the communications pedestals on this slide, we got with Midco, Cable One, and Century Link, got all the communications people together, and we got them to...talked them into having the same pedestal, so you don't have, as in the bottom-left photo, you know, clutter of pedestals. And we even got Midco and Cable One, they share the front lot line to bolt their pedestals together. And actually, we almost talked them into using the same pedestal, so you don't have so many pedestals. The Midco, a power control building, we designed that. They were okay with that, as long as we paid for the fieldstone on the little wellhouse, which we call it. And I won't go into the other elements, but I guess the point is, we put a lot of effort into this design, and having a 2,300-foot lineal feet of concrete inside the circle that's redundant and replicates the six-foot and eight-foot sidewalk outside the circle, which leads you to all the amenities, seems like it'll really do damage to our pristine, you know, farmstead that we created. So anyway, I guess I...we hope that you'll accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and allow us to do our alternative sidewalk plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this sidewalk waiver? Anybody wants to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just make a comment or two. Quick question, when did you first build out there, Ken? How many years ago, 20?
We bought the project 20 years ago. Built the barn in 99. Our main business is an advertising and public relations agency, and so we use that. Most of our clients are scattered around the country, so we use the barn, Rocking Horse Farm, as a branding device. And we had people coming from out of town. It was an enlightening way for them to, you know, feel...
Sure, thank you. It's a unique property, obviously, because of the history and what you've talked about. And I leaned over and asked Commissioner Pepcorn, is this the first time when a Planning Commission has made a recommendation, and then staff comes in with a second motion? It's kind of a unique situation to be in. When I'm going to check, and we're going to talk about future, about, you know, is this proper to be bringing two motions when the Planning Commission has already made its action? That's set for another day. And I recognize, you know, city staff have their recommendations, et cetera, but it's unique. And so, Don, in your opinion, it would be possible...one of the questions at the Planning Commission meeting was, how long will Mr. Promersberger own the land, and what about the future?
Yes, sir.
There was nothing that could preclude a decade from now, somebody, a new owner of that property, coming in and asking for sidewalks, if that were the case?
That would be possible, sir, yes.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Planning Commission recommendation for the waiver.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Donald, could you explain the difference between the two votes of the Commission, the October 3rd vote and the October 18th vote, just so I'm clearer on that? And you had said there were some...one abstained and two other...I'm just helping...
On the actual vote at the Commission, sir?
Yes.
Yes, so the final vote was four to three?
On October 18th. Actually, both days.
No, the Planning Commission only voted once, sir. I'm not sure which are...I don't have...
I'm getting...I understand. So this is an update on the...
Yes, sir, yeah.
So explain that vote to me again, please.
So there were...we have 10 commissioners. So there was a...the vote was four to three, so four in favor of the Planning Commission's motion there. And then one commissioner abstained, and there were two commissioners absent.
And that abstention, was that due to a conflict of interest then?
I believe it was.
I'm assuming?
That's correct. It was Commissioner Brust who abstained. And Commissioners Sobolik and Shurling were absent. I believe Commissioners once asked about the count in an earlier one, so I put that additional information in there.
But typically, once the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, that comes to us as the motion?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. But staff felt compelled to give us an option if we wanted it?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
I think we'll finish this page, and then we'll take a little short break. Polls changing youth passenger fare for Mattbus fixed routes surface. Julie Bummelman to explain. Julie, you had some data for us as well, right?
Thank you for that excellent prop, Jeremy. That was extra bonus points.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, within the document that was provided, there are some calculations and such to show what at least the anticipated impact would be. What we're...to sum it up, what we're trying to do is implement a summer...we're taking away the summer youth pass, and we would eliminate the 30-day pass for the youth. Now, youth is K through 12. So...but what we do in replace of that is implement a 90-day pass for youth. And currently, what we do in the summer is we have a 90-day pass. It costs the same as a 30-day pass. So currently, anybody that's a youth can purchase 90 days' worth of rides for $26. And what we're proposing is that we switch to a 90-day pass year-round, so that they can purchase for $26 a 90-day pass every 90 days. Excuse me?
This isn't only youth, this is people with disabilities and senior citizens as well?
This would be strictly youth.
Just youth only?
Correct, yes. And so, yeah, the discount fare is available to youth, seniors, and people with disabilities, but we're only proposing youth change at this point.
Youth only, okay.
Yes.
So anyone present who wishes to speak to this change? Has anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Who's approved?
Mr. Garrick, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Grinberg, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Item 39, you have my recommendation to repoint Heather Fisher and Paul Gill to the Historic Preservation Commission. You have my recommendation, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Strand, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Garrick, roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 40, we'll take a five-minute break and come back to item 40. Bruce Scrub to explain. Call the meeting back to order?
Yeah, but we were flying out.
Great to see this networking happening. Good, good, okay. You're all like millennials now. Consider funding plan for the demolition of City Hall. Bruce Scrub to explain.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's kind of obvious, but this item is related to the City Hall construction project, specifically the demolition of what will soon become our old City Hall. New City Hall is expected to be functionally complete in the spring of next year. And once all of the departmental operations have been moved over to the new building, we would like to demo the old City Hall and have it removed. The demolition was not included in the City Hall project bid, because, as you may recall, we did bid it twice. The original design bids came in at $31.1 million. Did not include the demolition of the old City Hall. And so there was a redesign effort and a rebid, and those bids came in at $22.5 million in an effort to see how the bids compared. We didn't include the demolition of old City Hall in the second round of bidding either. So I recently requested an estimate of the cost to demolish and remove the old City Hall and site restoration work necessary to make the new City Hall function and make it accessible. The total estimate for that work, you can see in front of you, is $795,000, which included, in addition to the physical demolition and removal of old City Hall, also asbestos abatement out of that building before the demolition can occur. About $100,000 for landfill disposal fees, building permit fees, inspection fees, those types of things. And then an amount of money for the site restoration work, obviously, to get us to the front door of the new City Hall. Since this is a non-budgeted item, this was taken and presented to the Finance Committee at the end of last month with some potential funding options that were discussed. The Finance Committee recommended that I bring it to you with a preferred recommendation for funding, which I have in front of you tonight. And I am proposing that we utilize the remaining balance from the sale of the Harwood Township property that has a balance of $319,000, that we utilize an allocated surplus in the Vector Control Fund. That's a $243,000. And then utilize a small portion of the 2018 Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $233,000. As we've done with other similar city projects in the past, we may want to consider a waiver of the landfill disposal fees and building permit and inspection fees. We've done that in the past, that would reduce these costs by about 15%. I've got two aerials that I just want to call your attention to. The one that's currently on the board, if you look at that, you can see in the middle of that drawing, existing City Hall, new City Hall to the east toward the top of the screen. And so you can see why we would like to remove the existing City Hall. Quite obvious. But Greg, if you could go to the next aerial. You can see the site grading plan that we think we need to complete to make...give us accessibility to the new front door of City Hall. And so where the current City Hall sits, once it's removed, and we've done this site grading, we'll have a direct path from the library parking lot, ADA accessible, right to the front door of City Hall. To the south, or the right part of the screen, is a...that's kind of what we've referred to as the southeast corner of the Civic Plaza. That is about 11 feet lower than the Civic Center, and so we've got quite a grade transition to deal with there. Will we make a decision at some point in the future, not too distant future, about what to do with the plaza and what to do with that southeast corner? But for the time being, we'll utilize it for parking, and we've got a temporary ADA-accessible pedestrian connection to the front door as well. It seems kind of obvious that City Hall needs to come down, but I asked Kent to come up and talk a little bit about the condition of City Hall and kind of what led us to building a new City Hall today. We had kind of a bill of health, a little bit of investigation on City Hall. Kent, maybe you can speak to that about four or five years ago, that kind of steered us in the direction of a new City Hall.
Thank you, Bruce. Yeah, we've been planning for this for some time, and I did pull out of our archives in 2013, a study that was done by Obermiller Nelson, a company specifically with regard to the heating and the electrical and the plumbing. And I had two paragraphs I just wanted to read to you. Bottom line is, this is an original building with original equipment that is well beyond its useful economic life. I want to read it because it's rather interesting. The City Hall was originally built in 1959 at 30,000 square feet of plumbing. Building construction includes mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. And the equipment at the time, this is from 2013, were 54 years old. They're now 57 years old. Industry standards indicate that the useful life of these systems of this type installed in the building averaged about 30 years. Based upon industry standards in the system, the buildings are now 24 years beyond their useful life. And they're dynamic, and they need to be replaced and updated from time to time. The systems and the equipment in the building are long overdue for an overhaul or a complete replacement. And those evaluations were made back in 2013, and significant cost estimate of about $1.8 million just for the HVAC systems, that was one of the... was one of the larger components of the project. And we were instructed at that time to go into survival mode with regard to City Hall, and then that was the launch of planning for City Hall. And in the final conclusions and recommendation, it basically says, "In our opinion, the entire heating and cooling system should be replaced as it's outdated and in such poor condition. The system will fail, it's just a matter of time." So, we're well beyond the useful life. We don't have plans to rehab the facility and, or even to use it on an interim basis because we just think that the repair and maintenance and upkeep costs would be astronomical. And we've actually made some enhancements to splitting the system, the heating system, so we don't have a complete loss of the facility during the winter. We're able to manage parts of the heating system to keep at least part of the building alive. So, we've done as much as we can. And again, back to 2013, the strategy was to just not spend any more money on this building, including the roof, the windows, the HVAC, all of that was probably four to six million dollars all in.
Mr. Grinberg?
Bruce, two questions. You answered the first one, you know, on the service, it didn't seem to me to make a lot of sense to charge yourself disposal fees when we have the disposal site. And if there's action needed tonight, I would suggest that we waive the fees so we're not paying ourselves to reduce the cost. Second question, do we need an architect for this? I know you had an architect give an estimate, but there's no architectural fees or additional fees on top of your question?
No, demolition plans are quite a bit simpler than building plans. And so, in this case, we don't need to do anything outside the architectural contractual agreement we have right now.
So, we would just have Ben Dow handle this, we could do a bid and?
No, we would, we would do a bid, but we utilized our own engineering office and their expertise to help us with the hazardous way. They're experts at demolition, yeah.
Mr. Pepcorn?
A couple of questions. Oh, I support doing this, obviously, but so, right now, isn't the heating system connected with the Civic Center? Is there, is there a connection or is that not? And how's that, how's that going to be? I'm no, anyway, just out of curiosity, just what are they going to do there?
Yeah, the, there is a set of boilers circa same vintage as what I just reported that are in the Civic Center, and that's the main primary boiler heat source. There's a line that runs from the Civic into the central City Hall and all up and down the corridor with regard to the heating and that. So, I'm assuming that they would cap the line and keep the boilers in place, albeit, you know, they'd be next up for replacement, depending on what you decide to do with the Civic Center.
But basically, that whole thing will be sealed off, locked off, and then that will be, and then the other, and I know it's already in there, but asbestos, obviously, there's a lot in here. And so, if you don't mind just talking about that, do you hire, that's a separate thing? And where does that go?
That, that is a separate contract. It'll be part of the demolition contract, but that, that abatement specialist will, will come in, remove all of the asbestos, and then our city landfill is also a permitted hazardous waste storage facility. It goes into our landfill and then we survey where it's located so we know where it sits forever.
So, is that possible, we could save some money there too with the whole?
Yes.
Hazardous waste is super expensive, but if we are the ones that are, can we do the same thing, not charge ourselves for that? That might save us some money too.
You bet.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Mr. Strand, or Commissioner Garrick, I'm sorry.
I mean, I obviously support this as well, but at some point, it's just, if you're a regular citizen, it's extremely annoying. It would keep coming back to the well, and we're finding out that we need $800,000 here or whatever. We went from $31.1 million bid to a $22.5 million bid, and that was a big win, obviously is a big win. But then later, we find out we need $400,000 for centennial demo. That should have been in the bid. Then we need, you know, $800,000 for this demolition, that should have been in the bid. Then we need $1.9, $1.8 million for FFNE. That should have been, that should have been all talked about at the exact same time so that residents who are having these conversations over their dinner table could say, "Well, you know, $22 million might be okay, but you know, $28, that's getting a little up there again. You know, we're adding more and more cost." And I remember last year, I asked if the FFNE was the last thing we need to worry about. Yes, it is. Well, then this comes up, you know what I mean? So, at this point, what do you do? You got to get rid of the building. You can't just have it sitting there. But we should have had this conversation in full. So, now I'm forced to support this, even though to the average citizen, it looks like we're just taking more and more and more, and we weren't having a honest conversation with the residents, which to me is unacceptable.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, Mr. Grubb, is there any salvageability in a project like this? I just don't know. But like, can things be saved and salvaged or turned over to restore or entities like that? Or is that, I'm just curious.
Well, based on the condition assessment, we're utilizing for our file cabinets, things that are usable, but we may be wanting to give Restore or some other entity a chance to salvage some things out of there. We have no reason not to.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Graham, sorry, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Strand? Pepcorn, Strand?
Without our own assessments.
Without the fee you're talking about?
Waiving the?
Waiving city fees.
Yes.
And landfill, everything that we can waive is right? Is that correct? Okay.
Is that included in the motion then? Yes. Thank you. If that's okay.
Absolutely, and I think, I don't want to get into the specifics in the motion, but I just, all those things that we talked about, the saving money on the landfill, on the asbestos, all those things are implied, so.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 41, consider resolution to authorize a filing of application with North Dakota Department of Health for a loan under the Clean Water Act for a membrane water treatment plant and improvements project. Troy Hild to explain.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, this, this item, I'm seeking approval for a resolution to submit a new loan application for the membrane plant, and I'll go to the first slide. And looking, looking at this, I'd like to modify the loan to, for better interest rates and then also to fund the project to the, the end of the project. When we, and this, this item actually passed unanimously at our utility committee. With, with the interest rates on your, I put information, significant financial items there. The original loan was a 2% interest, and then the new loan terms would be 1.5%. When we look at the other piece at bid award, is we, we took a project that came under, under the loan needs, which was about $15 million. And if you look at the 2.82% interest to 1.5% interest, you're looking at, for this first-year savings is, just with the interest savings, is over $500,000. If you look at, I looked at it a couple of different ways, just the simple Excel difference in interest calculation was about $530,000. When I looked at the amortization schedules and did some comparisons, it was about $590, but it's, it's over $500,000. And if you carry that out for a few years to 2024, I took it out, that's about $3.5 million over the first few years of the loan. And so, that, that's, that's kind of the financial interest piece of that. The other things I just thought I'd talk about is that this project, it had $30 million in the State Water Commission funding, and then when we rebid the project, it was about a $13.3 million cost reduction. So, we did some things there as well for the project.
Very good.
When we, I just wanted, it's, when we look at the cost for the membrane plant, it's, it's amazing, some of the other plants in the region, RO plants, it's, it's just really remarkably close. And the information I pulled was, close to home, I guess, Grand Forks, they're, they're under construction right now. West Fargo, they did a, a study in which, that was a study that looked at either building a plant or purchasing water from Fargo, and they elected to purchase water from Fargo. Another one that's under construction right now is Yankton, South Dakota. And the next slide, I just show you just some comparisons of construction and then overall costs with the, these plants. And one thing I didn't, I probably didn't label this correct, it's, it's, the cost comparison is, is a cost per gallon of treatment, so dollars per gallon of treatment. So, got to kind of normalize it. But when you look at construction costs, these, all these other projects are within 5% construction costs. And then when you look at all-in costs, I didn't have, the, the city commission packet didn't have the all-in cost for the Yankton project, but for the, for the other two, it's within 1%. So, we're actually really close on a cost-per-gallon basis to these other projects. This I just threw in, one of our equipment providers was in town today, so I just thought I'd throw a couple of pictures of that tour, and it's becoming real now because it's being, it's being built, the pipes are there, and here's some pictures. But the picture on the, on the right, that's what General Electric, or now they've been bought out by Suez, but that's the membrane system that cleans up before RO. So, what you're looking down is pump gallery, those are the pumps that provide vacuum to pull the water through the membranes and take out the particles to go to RO. The picture on the upper left, that's our ozone contactor, so we built that with, or we designed that with like springtime when we have issues with taste and odor, when the water is really tough to treat, we built it with that in mind. And then the one down to the left is some, a cleaning tank for the reverse osmosis system. But those are just a couple of pictures from today. And this one, the, the, this is an RO skid, there's five of them in the, in the plant, they'll each put out 2 million gallons a day of water, RO water. So, just looking at the, the costs, when we want to look at our financial model, make sure we can pay for the project. Our existing plant had a principal and interest payment of about $4 million annually, and that was actually paid off now, this, the end of this last year, early, or early this year. With the membrane plant, our final loan amount that mask in for the resolution would be $98 million, and the annual payment would be 4.4 million. So, it's up a little bit from our previous payment, but we're pretty close, so we can manage that financially. First payment would begin in 2019, and the terms, 2%, 1.5% interest plus admin, they add 0.5% admin on all of their loans. And then, with the revenue adequacy or financial model, that's something we've, we've watched the entire process from first bid to second bid. We just, we track it, tracked it all the way through. So, this, again, just the loan terms, $98 million would be 30-year term, 2%. The no AIS requirements, they're waiving that because that's a requirement that's come in in recent years, we're sort of grandfathered in, which actually raises the cost, would raise the cost if applied to our project. So, that's, was very helpful that the state was willing to work with on that. And that's all I have questions. This is just this schematic of where the water's going in the, in the plant, so I welcome any, any questions.
Very good. Any questions, Commissioners?
I'll make the suggestive motion, I just, well, I'll wait for a second, I guess.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Pepcorn, you want to say something more about this?
Yeah, I really like Troy, thank Troy for all the hard work. He watches the costs of all these things so closely. It almost blows my mind whenever we have our meetings together, how detailed he gets into it, week after week after week, to make sure the costs stay on par with what the original cost of the plant was. Even with adding West Fargo to this program, we're still within 2% of the original bid cost? Is that still correct?
Yeah, we're within, yeah, well, we added some equipment for West Fargo, so we're probably up over that 2%, considering that. But, but yeah, we're, we're in, you know, between about one and a half right now, so.
So, it's really fantastic to work with these guys, and it's the same with Terry at the landfill and Jim at the sewer plant. So, thank you guys all for the work, and this is a great deal.
Troy, can you show us a picture of a membrane when you're done using it? Is it the same graphic things you have on the other stuff? When you're using these membrane cleaners, is it like a coffee filter or?
Yeah, oh, that's, no, that's a good, good question. That was a neutralization take, so it's not like a, it's like a cleaning solution. So, yeah, it would, it would probably turn a little murky and stuff, but we, it's more of a cleaning solution. So, what it does is it chemically reacts with the membrane surfaces to kind of clean up because once they get dirty, the, the water won't travel, travel through them. But yeah, we actually have a, a cutaway of, I think we have a cutaway of some used membranes from piloting, but we'd be happy to show that to you.
You always have those great pictures.
Yep, all right. Thank you.
Motion, second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Finally, 42, I know there's a lot of people waiting for this part to come up, so it's the election reform proposals, which you all got last meeting. And Commissioner Tony Grinberg to start the discussion.
I'm going to ask Eric Johnson to give an overview here in a moment, then Steve Sprague to give some historical perspective, and then I'll have some comments to gauge where we go, next steps. What I wanted Eric to clarify is, I use the scenario that if this primary general election were in place today, and the impact of last June's election where 11 candidates ran, there would be four that would move from the June primary to the November, and that those four candidates would be paired together so that in one seat, there was 50% plus one that would win, that candidate would win, or there'd be a tie likewise, so that there would be a majority plus one that would put those two people in office. And I want Eric to clarify that with what the Home Rule Charter Amendment that he drafted on my behalf.
Yeah, so you're referring to the idea that if there are four candidates, people are voting for two, with different people giving votes to any one of the four, the winning candidates might end up being less than 50%? Is that, is that the question?
My understanding that the way it would be teed up or drafted is that there would be, in that scenario or any scenario where there is, if there's only one seat open, for example, there would be two that would be running for that.
Right. Yeah, okay, I, I thought I knew what you were getting at, but I wasn't certain. So, one solution, let's put it this way, one solution, if, if the desire is that the winning candidates, we'd like to see them to have a majority bid, majority vote, that is what, one of the topics that was discussed by the task force, was a desire to, to have winning candidates end up with a majority, so that there seemed to be clear winners. One solution for that is, rather than to have a runoff election of four candidates where everyone votes for two, you could just identify candidates for one seat and then a second seat. We typically run, at least with the current make model of, of a mayor and four commissioners, there are two commission seats up every two years. You could select each seat as having its own slate of candidates, have a runoff election so that for that seat, there are two candidates. And, and each voter would vote for one of the two. And in that case, then you would have a clear winner between the two candidates. Similar would be the case for the second seat that's open. You'd have a different slate of candidates, there'd be a runoff election for that slate of candidates, the top two vote winners would go on to the general election. And again, you would have one vote for each of, for those two candidates. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Sprague? Mr. Sprague had put some data set together over elections before the changes were made in the 90s. If you could comment on those to give a perspective of the number of candidates and how the process worked?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So, I was asked to do a little bit of research previously by another request earlier this fall, and what I've discovered doing that research was that the runoff election provision was established in a special election in January of 1986. After that, we've, we've had, we had three runoff elections, and then after the last runoff election in April, or in May of 2000, a question was put before the voters in November of 2000, whether or not they wanted to continue with the runoff provision. So, interestingly enough, in April of 86, we had five candidates running. Gibb Romenschenkel garnered enough votes, he garnered more than 50% of the votes, and so, he didn't have to go forward with the runoff. That was the way the provisions were set up. And so, then the second seat, as Eric was mentioning, had the next two highest voters then face off. And it was interesting to find out that in the first election, the, the person that had the higher vote total lost than in the runoff, you know, when we got down to the last two candidates. And then similarly, in, now, the records that I have, and again, I didn't start until December of 99, so I'm going back into files that were left when I, you know, and just trying to piece together what I can find. I can find. Um, so in April of nineteen eighty-eight, just two years later, the the second runoff election occurred, um, and we had a total of about eight candidates. Um, four of them, no candidate garnered fifty percent of the vote in the in the, um, general election or the the city election. And so we had a runoff election three weeks later. And, um, again, the the candidate that finished third, uh, ended up being elected. And so the, you know, when we looked at ranking the the, uh, position of the different vote totals, um, we saw kind of a, I don't know if you'd call it an upset, but a change in in the voting habits then of the of the people. And then, um, in April, April eighteenth of two thousand, again, we had quite a number of candidates, um, around that eight again. Um, and in this case, the the high four went on and faced off with each other, and the two highest vote totals, um, did end up being elected. So that's just a little bit of history. I didn't, probably pretty confusing to just stand here and talk about.
So why did they get rid of the recall?
Um, the the people voted seventy percent to to get rid of the recall and to combine our elections with the county. Um, and they just thought that, uh, you know, you saw one of the things was voter fatigue, um, because we would have an election in April, and then we'd come back three weeks later and have the the final city election in May, and then, uh, you know, four weeks after that, they would have the June primary. And so I think there was a little bit of voter fatigue, and you saw the the vote totals dropping in each each of those different elections.
Thank you, Steve. Um, so I I asked for this to be on the agenda again, and I I recognize that I know at least three of us have been public about our opinions about election reform. And, um, I think at a minimum, my sense is that we ought to have further discussion tonight. And then, um, if we're going to have a vote on all the task force recommendations, we set a date for that in the future. So for example, if Commissioner Gerg wants to pitch wards, then, um, he has time to prepare for that. That was, you know, stepping back two weeks ago, my perspective was here are the two things that I believe in my judgment we need to move forward on. Um, I'm certainly willing to make those motions tonight, but I don't know if being haphazard about it is prudent in our work as city commissioners. But I wanted to get, you know, everyone's take on this topic. And then if if it's a desire of commissioners to bring all these issues forward, we need to address that, then pick a date, and then act accordingly, and then move on. And if the public is not happy with what three to two is, or five to zero, or four to one is, then they have that time to go through an initiated measure on their own to change the Home Rule Charter. But I think it's incumbent on us that we, um, we address this.
So Commissioner Grinberg, I just wanted to clarify is that when the election committee that met and came forward and did recommendations, I do not see that they recommended your final recommendation, that to do the June primary and then do an election in the fall. They they seem to pass on that, so I'm a little confused on that. They pushed approval voting on six candidates.
They did discuss all the options, um, but they did.
But they didn't they didn't recommend that, right? Okay.
Just like they couldn't find consensus on wards, they, um, they wanted to keep you part time. So there's, it's a task force. They worked hard, they gave us the recommendation.
Not debating that, but your final resolution seemed a little bit different than maybe all of what the recommendations were, but that's fine. Commissioner Gerg, you comment?
I don't, I think it's prudent. Uh, if we can all get our thoughts together, we at least we have something to look at at that point. I like the idea of not being haphazard about it and going one by one and looking at some of the recommendations but not others, um, which is what I think you were talking about. If we're going to make recommendations, we should look at all the the items that were spoken to and have an up or down vote, that's fine with me. Um, but I think we do need to be careful about changing how we change the system. In nineteen eighty-six, we went to a runoff system with about seven thousand people voting for it. In two thousand, more than twenty-two thousand people voted against that system. Uh, so it does matter about the turnout and when these elections happen and how they happen. Uh, having a runoff where you have twenty thousand people vote first and then five thousand vote second, that that's not, even if you get a higher percent, that's not a good thing. Overall, it's not a good thing. So having more people included in the process is what I think is the most important thing here. Um, and if we can find ways to do that, I think what you're saying, Tony, is prudent to to wait and then have a full discussion.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so in the last two weeks, I've had exactly zero. I haven't had one person call me, email me, text me, zero. Seriously. So that that tells you, why are we doing this? What's the critical, what is, uh, and so to me, I have a tough time. No one cares. So so that's, uh, that that strikes me as, uh, so so that's the one thing. And I do think the voter fatigue thing is legitimate. I think if we're put on the November ballot with everything else, uh, it it shows, uh, just when people are voting, by the end, they're just, uh, they're not even voting for those positions. And I really like the having the city be its own election in June, where the school board, park board, where our issues are in the spotlight. Otherwise, I'm just saying, uh, that's just my perspective. And the other thing is, for us as candidates, uh, to run for basically a year, that's that's a huge commitment. Uh, and it's not, then you basically run two elections, which we don't, we don't spend a lot of money, but it's it's also your personal time. I think that's that's a legitimate thing that, uh, and so that I would have a real tough time. And I I want to see some public, if literally we have, I have zero responses, what, I mean, seriously, what are, what is, what are we doing? We got a lot of important things going on in our city, and this ain't one of them. Thank you.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, this this topic is is, we're kind of getting election reform fatigue sometimes, uh, and and trying to figure out where to land. But here's here's where I'm at. I I, when we ask the public to do something, I believe we owe them an answer. And we we ask the public to engage, and and they and they came back with two recommendations, uh, one to take it to the public to vote to increase the size of the commission to seven from five, and and the other to consider, uh, taking it to the public to explore and approve or not approval voting versus the runoff. I'm not landed for sure either in in any particular place on these, but I believe we owe them an answer. And and like you folks, I, the the feedback is getting less all the time, so they're they're, the folks aren't clamoring. But I know folks are very passionate about this issue of reform and 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 won't give up. And I don't blame them, they're that passionate. So I I want to join with Commissioner Grinberg in, what I would suggest we do is some public engagements. And and we ask the public to show up. And are you interested? What's your thoughts? What would you like? Um, I've reached out to the school district just as an example, we could, and I've reached out to, uh, Mr. Lemke, at least one of the members of the task force, uh, the citizens task force. But we could conceivably, for example, have a a a public engagement in each middle school. And and have folks from the task force apprise them, whoever shows up, uh, what what their recommendations were and why, and hear from the people. And I'm not sure we'll hear from people or not. But but that's my sense, is we go to the public, have some engagements, use that as a gauge to a degree somewhat of public sentiment, uh, and and then we bring it to a vote like Commissioner Grinberg says, up or down.
I guess one of the things I'd request from the team is that if we could do, break it up a little bit, rather than yours is combined, you went to six, and then you had to move to the primary election as well. If you could separate out, do you want approval voting or not? Do you want to put that put on the ballot? Do you want to move to six commissioners or not? Let's put that and discuss that if you think that's true. And then if you would like to move the election to the form your format you're saying, because really, your question, Mr. Grinberg, really is stating that can we get a majority vote in in a sense, when you divide your numbers of candidates, that should bring that out there. But if the group says no, we're okay with the present system. And just my bias is I do like the center focus, city elections in June, it just puts the source candidates on the on the ballot and kind of makes a good discussion. Um, the commissioners that got voted with the rest, last amount are doing a good job, so I don't find that fifty percent mandate. If you have three candidates, it's hard to get a fifty percent mandate unless you're extremely popular. So Carson Wentz probably could win, but the rest of us would have trouble getting that vote count. But to your point, all your points, if we want to have discussion with the public, the election committee has great interest in this, and I've heard from them, and I've heard some different other people that have surrounded that. But you're right, what does the real public want? Because is the present system working? It seems like it's working. It seems like we're muddling along and doing good city government. If you expand, we've seen some places decrease numbers, Minot decreased, Grand Forks decreased. So how many numbers do you need to do that? So it might be good to have an advocate for whatever position there is. If you put forth this idea, maybe you're the advocate for that. But if you wouldn't mind, can we just break it to 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 the issues of question, and then maybe if the commission puts forth two of those items, maybe they go into one ballot. But I I think for the public, it'd be better to have them broke up a little bit, so. Other comments?
I just want, I guess I'll one last comment. And and none of these changes would affect any election happening until twenty twenty, even if we passed it the next election. So any any idea out there that somehow it was protecting our seats, or it doesn't matter what we decide at this point, it won't affect the next election, it might not even affect the election after that. So I want to make that clear, that we're doing what's in the best interest of Fargo here, um, not anything else beyond that.
So just as a thing of process, just the feelings of the commission tonight, Commissioner Gerg and Grinberg, you were part of that election force, task force. Do you want to talk about the path going forward and bring it back to us? Or how would you like, do you want to settle it tonight and tell us what we're going to do, go to the future to solve this issue?
For those that are listening, um, the debate we've had here tonight is the same debate that the task force had, they couldn't come to consensus on many of the issues. So my position is we take a vote up and down on what's in the task force report and move on. Um, we asked for public hearings twice this spring, and nobody showed up. And I think if we had more public meetings, and to Commissioner Pepcorn's point, nobody's going to show up. But as responsibility to appointing that task force is it our job to vote up and down those recommendations. That's the public's work. Um, that we created this task force based on feedback and and tension in the community, it's our job to resolve it, either yes or no. And so I don't, I I'm not in favor of going through more committee process, because I think we're going to get the same product. But we did put forward a task force, and we should act on it, or or decide not to act on it. That's fine, too. If the motion is just leave it alone, then we've addressed it. And then it's back in the people's hands what they want to do. But I think many in the public are waiting for us to make a decision. And so in my opinion, that should be between now and the end of the year at a commission meeting, not March.
You want to make it tonight?
I would move by the end of the year. We have acted on all the recommendations of the task force.
There a second?
I'll second that.
There is a discussion. Mr. Gerg?
I guess the point I'd make is that any one of us commissioners can put any any item on the agenda we want at any point, right? So I don't think we're out of, I think of doing anything crazy by saying, okay. I mean, that's why I'll vote yes on that, because I could ask for a vote right now, you know what I mean? So.
So just bearing that in mind, is your intent then, Commissioner Grinberg, is that, like Commissioner Gerg said, anybody could bring a motion, uh, Commissioner Pepcorn could bring, I want approval voting, uh, have a motion, bring it forward, we would address it and say yes, no, and that'd be the end of that particular aspect?
That would be my intent, is that all the issues that picket by the end of the year are meeting, that we vote them up or down, and we're done with our work. And then the public isn't happy with that, they have time to gather signatures and do what they want to do. Um, but for us to delay this into the spring, um,
And then to be the devil's advocate, if none of the commissioners bring forth any items, does that mean it's a dead issue?
It's a dead issue.
Okay. Any further clarification or discussion? Commissioner Strand?
I might have a separate motion, Mayor, after this.
After this, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gerg?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Mr. Strand?
Mayor, I would move that we, the Fargo City Commission invite, uh, leadership representatives of the special task force to consider holding at least one public engagement, uh, to 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 see how the sentiment of the pub, the people is, or to gauge the public sentiment. And and if they have one public engagement that works, maybe they go to a second and then to a third, uh, geographically across town. But I'd say at least one, to give the folks out there a chance to to show up and ask questions about the recommendations of the task force or to to learn more.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gerg?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Is there any other business tonight? Mr. Strand, do you want to report how your task force went today, the mission, so we know what went on?
Uh, I will, Mayor. Um, the two governors convened their task force of sixteen folks and others to to discuss the status of the diversion. And with the the federal lawsuit that has put into a state, a state of of being in hold, there's 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 folks on upstream, folks downstream, folks from the Minnesota side, the North Dakota side, that are are beginning to look at the process of of the diversion, the goals of flood protection for the region, and and to then explore alternatives, uh, going forward. I I think we're going to have our hands full. I I believe that it's going to be an honest working group. I I don't think that it's a stacked deck by any any means, that it's a foregone conclusion where where this process will go. I I I believe my sense is both governors are are very committed to us coming up with a recommendation for the public. And and so I don't know that we're going to, um, not do that. But it it started today, it's going to maybe go through the middle of December, there'll be maybe probably weekly meetings, very substantial meetings, but, um, it's it's quite a process. And I'm I'm honored to serve, I'm humbled because I'm I'm not so sure. I I hope I don't misstep.
But John, they said they're going to have a solution by December fifteenth, so I wouldn't say maybe with that there. That's their charge, is they're supposed to have response. Commissioner Pepcorn?
Uh, first of all, thank you for serving, John. I, you'll do a great job. And my my technical question is, they basically said that our appeal date was November sixth. So basically, has that been stayed? Is that right, Eric, that basically we do not have, that is not necessarily as firm a date until after the, can you clarify that?
Right. The the parties have stipulated that a protective appeal can be filed, but no action taken on it.
So that's critical for us to know. So so that's, uh, we were we were very concerned about that date, and we also didn't want to jeopardize the the negotiations. And so that that basically is off the table.
DNR has agreed to that as well, the governor of Minnesota.
So that's great. Thank you.
And the other thing, there was a question of whether oxbow construction can continue. We now have a judge's ruling on that, which says oxbow construction can continue. So that is no longer in debate. Any other issues or discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Strand?
I would, for the sake of acknowledgement, we had, we had a, an unfortunate untomly death this last week, a very key player in our community, Mr. Bill Christian over at MetroCog. And and I just hope we're all, um, aware of the pain of the family and and anguish they're going through with this this situation of his death at a very young age. So we're, there there'll be some reorganization over at MetroCog. It's, MetroCog is all these regional communities and and the transit, transportation management coordination. But I just, I I think we should, I I hope that the family knows that our our hearts ache with them. And and we we thank, uh, Mr. Christian for his public service, uh, and and wish everybody the best going forward.
And John, maybe we can have a motion of silence just to honor him, work he did for us. Are you okay?
Certainly.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Is there any other business? Commissioner Pepcorn?
Can I just add one more thing? So I was the past chair of MetroCog, and so I worked a lot with Bill. He was a, he was a great guy. They're having a family service tomorrow, I believe, at Corsmo on Tuesday evening. So, uh, anyway, uh, just just so people know that. And, uh, MetroCog is a great group. It's all the, all the communities all have representatives, and so it's, it's a fantastic thing, and it's very, very, very sad. Thank you.
Very good. Any other business? Motion adjourned?
I'll move.
Your second? Call it in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.